All right, it's 6:30. We'll start the meeting. Any need for executive session?
Recording in progress.
Brenda, any need for executive?
No ma'am.
No one else? Okay. Any need to amend the agenda? I think we were gonna put back on the mowing.
The arms.
Mowing arms?
Yeah. I got these in last minute.
Okay, great. Anybody else have any amendments?
Move to accept as amended. Second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything on the, uh, meeting minutes of August 3rd?
There was only one thing. On the sections for the culvert, it said 10 and it should be 11.
Oh, okay.
Other than that.
They can still sign this in, okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, any questions on the orders?
Um, 1719, a backhoe thumb for $2,800. Chad, you buy a new one, or?
No, the piston for the thumb.
Oh, piston for the thumb?
Yeah.
Got a new one, I take it?
Got a new one, because the old one snapped.
Oh, you'll have that.
Unfortunately, yes.
Yeah. 2515, there's two to rentals for the fire department for air packs. One is 8,600, the other is pushing $15,000.
I think that's not what they discussed here. Aren't we splitting that on one year versus two, I think? Maybe got coded and wrong, I'm not sure.
I know, because they're on like rotation.
Yeah.
I know they're on, but it seemed like awful lot of money.
Out of last year's budget and one out of this year's budget. So maybe that's why. Is that right Brenda?
I believe they're on two different runs.
Yeah.
Or...
Yeah, we discussed that last time, didn't we?
Right, yeah. That's a year, kind of a yearly thing at the end of the year. They don't buy stuff until, because it's damned expensive. And you're mandated to bring this stuff up to code.
Right.
I think two of the new ones even have the new cameras on them, so that when they're going in, they can actually see.
See, okay, all right.
That's what it is, I'm pretty sure.
Okay. And then 3510 railroad lease, I mean, it's only $50, but what do we lease from the railroad?
Um, it's...
I've never seen that one.
Is it on the, can you tell me which run? I've got like five different runs.
It's in the...
It's in the 23. It's in the 60,000 run.
Okay.
So it must be an invoice from State of Vermont, is what I'm thinking?
Yeah, it's from the State of Vermont, yeah. Yeah.
There's, um, water testing California from Endine for 50.
No, Vermont State of Railroad Lease, on August 11th. 3510 is the vendor number.
I don't even have anything in here with that. I can't locate it in my packet, an actual bill for that. I can't see it on my list either.
Eight from the bottom.
Yeah, it's about mid, it's right about in the middle of that short page.
Brenda, if you could just find that later then?
Yeah, thank you.
Move along. Does anybody else have anything on the orders?
Oh, there's, uh, 515 is the number, Champlain Associates Depot, Elm Street, it was, you know, it was $1,325. I just have no idea what that was about.
Champagne, is that what you said?
Champlain Associates?
Oh.
Champagne.
Oh.
Depot, isn't that a, that's it.
Oh, that looks like a control panel.
I think it's a pump station.
Okay.
Maybe a sewer control panel. That's what I guessed it was.
Yeah, that sounds right, yeah.
It says control panel.
Yep.
Uh, the, it was 132550.
Yep.
Um, pump and control engineer on site time as well was included. The site time alone was 384. Travel time is also added in of $105 in mileage. And then the actual, it looks like the actual materials were 512. But then they add in other parts of the bill for travel and mileage.
Okay.
Yeah.
That sounds right.
So it was 132550 total.
All right.
I just had no idea what...
Yeah.
That's what it is.
Do you have anything else Joe?
That's it.
Okay. All right, the town manager's report?
So the first thing I just wanted to mention is the West Creek culvert project is going along as scheduled. Currently, it's in the phase of setting up. The concrete is setting up well. They removed, um, the framing around it. The testing from the lab is due in on Friday. For all accounts, everything seems fine. Next Tuesday, we're scheduled to have the culvert delivery process begin. It's, in case anyone didn't know, it's 11 pieces, so it's gonna be brought in on a flatbed each. The flatbeds may contain one or two pieces, depends on how big they are. They're gonna pretty much have them lined up one after the other, and then the crane will be there to insert each piece. And in between each piece, there'll be some sort of shimmy that has to take place by the contractor. Once that phase is completed, we're gonna be pouring the, um, the, uh, the side walls up, so that that will complete support for the, for the culvert. And from that point on, I think there's been some discussion about putting in a temporary one lane bridge or roadway for the local farming community, so that they can at least do their transports and not be put out. We have to wait though, it's a kind of a waiting game through each stage, but currently, everything is on time and, and going as planned. I have been sending out notices to all the concerned residents that are in, in that area, whether it was Procter or, and including Pittsburgh, just to keep them apprised of everything, because on Tuesday, there will be a power shutdown. Green Mountain Power is gonna, they set up a temporary location where they can easily turn it off and on for us. There may be a period of time where it's actually down for four hours continually. I spoke with the gentleman that operates the farm, um, right down the road from this culvert area. He came in to see me and we spoke. And he is already planning on converting over to his generator for that day, so that doesn't interrupt his process. So he was, he was okay. He just wanted to stop in and see how things were going and what the plan was. He did have the letter in his hand, so I know that that worked. So I, I'm gonna continue to update. I'll send out another update if there's any changes this week to, to any of these timelines. But as of right now, we're on time and on schedule for Tuesday delivery. It should start around 8:00 AM. And, I mean, I'm continuing, I, I put down, continuing throughout the day, because if there's any issues, the crane operator has told us that he will be there until it's finished. Because the next day, he's booked for another job. But he plans on being there for us until it's done. Trying to think if there was anything else. Another, so that's pretty much it with, with the, with that, unless anyone has any questions. There was an injury to a bicyclist on the Depot Road Covered Bridge. I was contacted last week by someone working in the Kamuna store, because a gentleman came up injured. I did dispatch the police out there to take his information down. He refused any sort of treatment. And he was picked up by a friend who took him back to wherever he came from. I think, I believe he's a Rutland resident. But he refused treatment. He didn't want to give any of his personal information to the police, so we took note of it, took a report, and that's basically all we could do. What it surrounds though, is the center portion of the bridge, there are boards missing, so it's, it's, I think it's like probably four stretches. And what he was doing is when he came through there on his bike, he tried to navigate off and on those uneven surfaces and he took a digger.
It's his fault.
So...
Well, that's not so much that there's boards missing. I mean, that's how that was constructed.
Designed that way.
He was probably doing one of these and he just zagged.
Yeah, he was trying to move it over and, but he was embarrassed.
Yep.
Let's see, Covered Bridge Research, so I, I managed to meet with the VLCT insurance representative and we discussed all sorts of insurance issues and, along with covered bridges. And we ended up getting on the conversation of the cameras, which I'm trying to, you know, figure out what's the best option to present to you. I, I did include in the packet two of the options, but I also reached out to Woodstock, because they're actually in the process of doing this as well. I'm waiting to hear back from them to find out what way they're going. So once I get that information, I'll forward that on to you as well. I don't know if it's gonna be much different than what we have. The only thing I can think of is that they have a lot more access to power, power poles and such in their areas. We don't. So what I'm looking at is more solar, probably the solar powered camera, because that one there, I can at least get video from, from the computer.
Okay.
The other one would be an SD card, and that's like a camper's, I mean, a hunter or camper's camera, where you put it on a fixed tree, you put a, the card in it, and I'd have to go and take the card out, and it just doesn't seem very practical. The other one at least would be battery and solar backup for power.
What do we have at the, uh, the dump?
Power from the...
We have a regular good camera, because we decided...
I just meant like, yeah, I mean, that's all I know. It's, it's got really clear pictures.
Oh, it's awesome.
Whatever we do, we need to have something really clear pictures.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be like that. I don't think it'll be that sharp.
Well, one thing I saw what you had there, I would not recommend getting a 150, $200 camera like that, they're junk.
Yeah, you want a good one.
You know, you're gonna spend, for something like that, five, $600 to get something that's good.
Yeah.
Right, the, the key thing here though is the power, is powering it up.
Well, no, but it's...
Well, no, but those ones can be, any of them can be, well, not any of them, but a lot of them can be run off solar.
Yeah.
So it's, you know.
Yeah.
But what, all we've got is, what, Cooley Bridge?
Depot Bridge.
Well, Depot you've already got.
We've done that, so we got Cooley, you got the one truck route, and I don't know about the Procter.
Well, nobody drives to a truck route though.
No, but you might wanna protect it.
Well, yeah. But definitely Gorham and Cooley.
You got Gorham, Cooley that are active, and you've got the other one that's, they do walk through it, you know.
Right. Now, isn't part of Gorham, Procter allowed?
Half of it, right now.
Yeah, half is Procter and half is ours.
Right, half is ours.
Yeah. And we've had instances down that bridge too, in the past.
Oh, no, I, no, I know.
Well, that's, I know, didn't we discuss reaching out to Procter's town manager and see if they would split that one with us?
Yeah, yeah. I can see what they...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely.
All right.
And I have, so I have a, the next thing is I have a stormwater flood plan master plan review scheduled with Joe Bartlett. Evidently, this, this is something that's already in place, and we're just gonna review it. I invited Chad and Sean to join me as well, so that I could have, you know, their input, because this'll be a new thing for me to review. I don't know, you know, if there's any major changes that have occurred. I wouldn't imagine there would be. But anyway, I have that scheduled for this upcoming week. Then the Armora attachment, but that's, yeah. The Florence Firehouse substation, I had a kickoff meeting with the chief, fire chief, to discuss that. So basically, the next step is going to be financing and, and getting some sort of conceptual drawing going for it. I didn't know where you wanted me to go with this, or when you wanted me to start, so I'm looking for guidance on that at some point.
Do we wanna consider, at the same time, maybe consulting an engineer for whoever? We got first response building, that we've gotta do something. Maybe we oughta combine it all into one type project? And we're also looking at a, here, maybe we oughta contact a firm and say, look, this is what we've got coming up here in the near future. We need some good ideas on how to accomplish this, how to do it. Maybe that's where we should start? And then at some point, you either go to bond, or, or ARPA, whatever, but we gotta start somewhere. To me, that would be the most logical thing to do is to, because we know we've gotta put an addition on the first response boom for our police, and we need to do the station in Florence. Those could maybe be combined in one, one thing, and we need to, we need a new room, a room up here. I mean, it's evident, tonight, very small crowd, but when we get a big crowd, we can't house them in here.
I guess I agree with all, I agree with that. The only thing, I think we need to, and I don't know how long this is gonna take, again, you've got that dispatch, there's a lot of money there.
Well, yeah.
That's available. If we could, that, get that building...
Wherever.
Built, at least part of it built through that money, get dispatch there, and, and I know, nobody wants to hear this, but...
No, look at that.
That rescue squad building is in pretty rough shape. I, I know you think they're gonna build on that cement, Tom. We, we agree to disagree. I don't believe anybody's gonna build...
Don't think so.
On that old cement that's been sitting like that so long.
Been there quite a while.
So, again, you know, I think one of the options we need to think of is fire station, dispatch, maybe police and rescue right there in Florence. Put it all right there in one building. I mean, that's what regional and the state, they want multi-use buildings.
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, I think it's an option we need to not overlook.
I just...
They sent that down there from Florence?
The first response, I don't, that's quite a ways out of the building, so, to me. And Florence is a substation for the fire department. It's not, you know, that's more...
Oh, I know, but you're building a building...
Yeah, but that, that could be housed in even a Butler building, basically, over there. Doesn't have to be a Taj Mahal. You need a garage to, to house some trucks, basically.
You're thinking of the big picture.
Yeah, I'm looking at...
Going on the next steps.
What's our next step? If we gotta spend a lot of money, maybe it's time to, to go for a bond, to do it all at one time, like many towns do that. I know Middlebury did that. Went for a bond up there and they went $5 million. They did, what, two stations at one time? They don't, they got all their projects done at once.
Right.
So if you're not going back every couple of years, say, well, we need this, now we need that. We know we need it. We've been talking about it for years now.
Yeah.
So maybe hire a consulting engineer, whatever, nail and braid somebody that can give us some ideas. I think that's our first step. Maybe form a committee here to, to look into it.
Well, we should definitely form a committee, and I think we should also look at the funding sources first, you know, I mean...
That's what we need to do, yeah.
Yeah. I was at that summit last week. I was gonna talk about that in select board member remarks, but there is still a ton of federal funding.
Oh, yeah, that's, maybe we can go after some of that.
Let's do that before, you know, going out to bond and, you know, see what we can get.
We're gonna get a bunch of federal money if some...
We got some coming, yeah.
Whether we can use it for these projects that we're talking about.
It's pretty liberal on what we've got coming, I think.
You mean with the ARPA that we already got?
Yeah, we've already got 800 and some odd thousand.
It's really flexible, what we can use, use it for.
We may be able to use the money that's headed our way to cover quite a bit of this. I don't know, you know, I don't know how, what the figures are, but...
We at least got money to maybe hire an engineer to, or whatever, to look at this.
Is that the same engineer that we used for...
No, it won't be, trust me. No, it won't be that one. I don't think Brenda likes him either.
If we just filled that hole in right now, we'd have another $280,000 to put towards our apartment. Hey, what do I know?
Anyway, that's where we need to go, I think.
So I think...
I think, I think first thing is a committee.
Yeah, we need a committee to sit in for it.
So that we can, before we even look for an engine...
Exactly, yeah.
We gotta be able to tell them what it is we're looking for.
Exactly. So, and I'd be willing to serve on that committee. That's something we need to do.
Yeah, I can do it.
Well, it can only be two of us, right?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Well, unless we're more in meetings.
Well, we can more in meetings, doesn't matter. We need more in meetings.
Well, I know, 'cause I'd be happy to be involved as well if we wanted to, more.
I think, I think more the better, yeah.
That's, yeah, okay.
That way, if one of us can't make it.
That works. All right. Maybe after the meeting, we can figure out a date and time or get everyone.
Yeah, that works.
Is that 144 going to put on this committee?
Two, well, I guess we, two at least from the board. I guess, what else are we looking for?
Yeah, we'll put, put the chief on.
Probably Bobby Foley.
Yeah, I would say, I would say Bobby Foley, Bill Appleton.
I'm sorry.
Does she have to have an odd number so that you can fight if meetings over the...
No, I have to.
Not necessarily.
I'll volunteer only if I can drive the blue mobile.
I doubt it. Ain't gonna happen. Ain't gonna happen.
I do think we should have a rep from the fire department.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
And first response.
And first response, all three.
Once you get one from all three, get an idea of what we're looking at to start with.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's good folks on all those departments.
Yeah?
So, okay.
All right, good. All right, select board, oh, was that, I'm sorry, was that, did you have something else?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, you did, okay. That does...
So, the other, one comment that was made when I met with them is they wanna know, is it okay if they sell the Mack truck from the 1960s?
I don't know what that is, what that is.
They have a truck there from 1960.
That's a truck that was donated to, to us from Ocean Grove, New Jersey, for a dollar back in, oh God, way, way, way back. I can't remember when.
So is it a tank truck?
No, it's an antique that they use for parades and stuff.
Oh.
You know, it's been kind of a, we use it, we don't. It's kind of been sitting there. I hate to see them sell it right now if they don't need to, because it's, it's worth quite a bit of money if they hang on to it. It's a 1960 Mack, very low mileage, excellent, no rust on it. Doesn't cost us anything to sit there, just housing it. I don't think the board would have an objection if we sold it, but, you know, I'd hate to see it go myself, but...
If there was someone interested in it, that was one...
Depends how, how much they're interested in it for.
So is, so is the fire department actually owns it?
It actually was given to the host company.
I think it was around 50, 50,000.
Was it? Gotta go.
I think, I'm pretty sure that's what he was...
If, if he can get that for it, by all means, sell it.
If I misspoke, then I'll find that out.
If, yeah, if you go for that.
He told me to just run it by you.
Put it towards his building maybe. What do you think?
Yeah, I know, for that kinda money.
For that kinda money, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, one time, they had an offer of 5,000. I said, you're crazy if you took that.
Oh, yeah.
The emblem alone, I know, is worth about $4,000. Yeah. If it's only 5,000, forget it.
Well, before we say, let's, let's, you come back with whatever the figure is.
Right, that will decide, yeah.
We're, we're not sure if we wanna sell it yet or not. I mean, if the guy's willing to throw out 50, maybe he'll give us 60, so...
It should be a written offer too, and signed.
Yeah, there you go.
It's business.
Written and signed.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so that, so that's a good point. So who is this 50,000 dollar bidder?
We don't know, probably, at this point.
Just call, you'll be...
Not me.
They might have the decimal point wrong as well. Be careful.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have one more thing. This is an important one. So this, yeah, this woman called me today, Jean Sotriakis, I hope I pronounced that correctly. They're gonna be doing a full sirene test of the emergency sirens in town.
Check it out.
And this is gonna take place on the 26th at 6:00 PM, and she said they changed it to the nighttime, because there was a lot of people that wanted that at night. I, I don't know a lot of the reasoning, but...
What time?
Six, and so it's the 26th at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
And it's supposed to last, uh, what did she say, eight to 10 minutes?
Is this the Chittenden one?
Yeah.
She's hoping that two people can volunteer, one to be, to stand over at Sagamon and have, over near the Hazen...
Hazen, yeah, Hazen.
Residents, and then one person to be at the shadow lane area.
Yeah, that's down over the hill.
To be able to get, see how loud it is or if it's...
Down, down the bottom of the hill, yeah, yeah.
I'll make sure I put that in Facebook, so nobody thinks we're...
Under attack.
The dam, uh, came down.
Didn't put a, say, there in the, in the Woodlot on the backside of Sagamon Hill.
That's what they're testing, yeah.
That's part of the project.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's, um, I'm a verlan.
All right.
Yeah, I won't be here.
That's it?
All right, great, thanks. All right, select board member remarks. I had a couple of things which I started to talk about. So I did go to that leadership summit last week. And, um, so just some things of note, again, that there's still a ton of federal funding, like, so what Vermont has, even just Agency of Commerce for Economic Development has $220 million. There was, I didn't write, um, Community Resilience has $45 million, which that could be used for energy savings for town buildings. They made a good, big point of saying that the rural municipalities really have to be strong and advocate, otherwise Chittenden's gonna get all the money.
New figures.
So, um, it was also suggested that we have like a, um, a ranked town project list that we can start looking at, like, sooner rather than later, because the money's not gonna be there forever. And this is like one-time stuff. This is, you know?
Yep.
Now, you know, the amounts that are in there are still...
Fluctuating.
From these last couple of years where all this money came flying out, so. So, yeah, so I guess we should probably just start thinking about, you know, high priority things around town and make a list and see if we can, if we can access any of this money.
If you guys have a list, do you guys have some sort of list?
No, that's what I'm saying, we gotta make one.
We need to start making one, I guess.
I don't even know if you have, like, certain things. For example, there, there's actually some FEMA federal money out there that I'm trying to get right now.
Okay.
I'm working, I contacted a FEMA rep, because the culvert on Fire Hill that still needs to be done qualifies.
Oh, okay.
So I'd like, and, and this is a big pool of money. Those are more difficult to get, but it might be worth the effort. So I contacted a rep, um, and I'm, I'm gonna work with her and see. She's a state rep here, but she deals directly with FEMA, so I'll see what I can, headway, I can... I'll see what I can headway I can make.
All right, yeah. I mean, I personally think it'd be good by the next meeting to have a, have a list, you know? And start working towards this, you know, see what we can get. They're FEMA, or they're from all these different places, you know, so I have, I have all my notes on it, but, you know.
And some of these I've already put in for.
Okay, cool. Great.
They, they were contacting me, like, right after June, and so I did a lot of pre, pre, what do they call it? Pre-requests, and then you go back, and then I've gotten till the, it's September to complete the full application.
Okay. Um, the other thing is I went to that open house at the Fire Academy today. They had the, toured the new East Cottage Dorm, which is beautiful. So, they can house now like twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five people. It's got a big kitchen. You'd be surprised seeing it, right? It looks great.
Oh, yeah, it's beautiful.
Um, and so when I finally met Heather Simons, who's the executive director, right, of the Criminal Justice Council, she's very cool. She's going to try to, I told her we'd coordinate. She wants to come to a meeting and introduce herself and then get, she's only been there, I think, a year. She's still pretty new, right?
She's new.
So, um, she came in during the pandemic, so all the stuff that used to happen there.
Doesn't happen.
Doesn't happen? You know, like, they used to have the senior luncheons there, bone builders, there'd be like.
Kids had movie nights.
Yeah, family, family fun nights. Um, so she's, she's excited to kind of like work.
Bring that back.
Work with us and see, you know, what the community would like to see happen there again, so that was all. So, that's all I had. Anybody else?
Uh, yeah. Uh, I had somebody get hold of me in reference to the no parking signs on Elm Street. Uh, this person mows lawns, and there's driveways that he doesn't have room to park in, and I guess he gets talked to about the fact that he has to park on the road. So, um, you know, I mean, his question is, why are there signs all the way down the road?
How far down?
They are, there are.
All the way to the bridge.
There are a bunch.
I don't know.
When the ordinance was.
Put in?
Put in, that's where the signs were. Never asked to put signs.
That before me.
Okay.
I think probably remembers.
If you guys want to change that, I'll.
I mean, I didn't think it, parking, was parking ever going to issue one?
I don't think anybody bothers him as far as him parking with his, you know, for his mowing.
But he's saying that he's getting hassled about it?
Uh, he's been hassled, and then he, he stuck his nose in somebody else's business and got hassled.
Got hassled, you're in.
But, yeah, I mean, it's just, he wanted me, I mean, he didn't understand why it was.
I think he's been there for years.
All the way down the road.
Yeah.
So, so, no explanation why it's all the way down the road. We were told, well, no, okay, okay.
I don't, I don't.
At some point, it was designated.
Heard that, right?
I mean, the signs aren't that old. They haven't been there that long.
I know, we did.
It was, I think, from Kamuta's down through there for a while. They're having trouble with two-way traffic.
No.
They were parking on so congested down further, I don't see a big problem.
Right.
They're parking down further, too.
Yeah, so, I don't.
Well, maybe, I mean, and I'm not, I guess, it's, if it's something we want to discuss more, we can put it on another agenda or something, but maybe just.
See what happens.
Have it on one side of the road so that you don't get people parking on both sides. I mean, something like that would be the thing for us to think about.
Dave, I don't say leave it the way it is.
For now.
And if, and if he gets a ticket, then we can.
Then we'll.
Okay.
Then you have to get a ticket, yes, or I don't see what, I don't know what's wrong.
Well.
While getting in a fight with somebody, maybe, huh?
Yeah, I, again, I just, I told him I'd bring it to the board, so. That's what I'm doing. So, that's all I've got.
All right. Anyone else? Okay.
Oh, we might, we didn't sign orders, but we can do that after the meeting.
Oh, gosh, we didn't.
We can finish that after.
Yeah.
I just wondered.
I can talk and sign at the same time, too.
Can you? You can, okay, okay. We can do that, I suppose.
Um, any public comment tonight? Do you have anything?
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Brenda Paulcorn, and I live on 614 Fifth Road. And I just want to say thank you so much for sending out the updates. They are very helpful. However, however.
But.
I wish they would have came out when the project started, just so that we knew what was going on.
Right.
Um, the project has been very, very stressful, because of course you have to drive all over God's creation, and as you, as everybody knows, there's multiple projects going on in Proctor, you know, which makes it difficult just to get to Kamuta's, you know, from where we are. This last update was very disturbing to me because of the power being turned off for four hours. I work from home. That's my livelihood, is having that power on. So, I kind of wish that there was some way it could be done. After hours, I, I know I'm just one person on that street that works from home, but it still does impact me. It has impacted other people in other ways.
Right.
But I just want to express how it will, how it will impact me. Um, I also wanted to bring to the board about a Facebook page. Is there a Facebook page for the town?
There is.
Yes.
For the town?
Yep.
Really?
Yeah.
I've never seen it. I, I wish I would have known that, because that would have been very helpful to have updates put on there as well.
Yeah.
You know?
If it helps you, the library's available, too.
Unfortunately, I'm a medical biller.
Oh, okay.
I, I can't do anything like that.
And then it's extremely hard to get to the library from West Fifth Road at this point from where she lives, because I'm her neighbor. And we have to drive all the way around, which is, that you guys know why I'm here. So, I'm just curious, what is really going on with the culvert? And are we even close to being on track for what you guys sent out as being the schedule? So, I have been paying very close attention to this every single day, and it doesn't look like a whole hell of a lot's happened.
Yep. Um, just before you had come in, I was going over that, and I told everybody, it is on time and on schedule. So, Tuesday is when the build is taking place. That's when they're going to start bringing the crane and the power is going down and that sort of thing. But it is on time and on schedule. Right now, where we are today, it's, concrete's setting up. I mean, there's nothing more we can physically do in the hole right now, other than wait for it to clear.
And are we still on budget for this, or is there going to be an extended period of time where we have to add more money to this project?
Um, as far as overages from the original quote.
Yes.
It's a possibility because of the delays that we've had and the engineering changes. It's a possibility.
So, these are just the delays in the engineering changes?
Yeah.
And nothing else?
Yeah. I don't know what you mean.
Well, I have been really looking around on there, and in fact, the other day, I went down with my laser level and set it up and checked on some of the grains, just out of curiosity, because I'm one of those kind of people. And I think that there has been some delay that we're not, because of a crappy engineer. And I think that if people make mistakes, that are costing the rest of us a ton of money at this point, we should be holding calendars for that. And at some point, everybody that lives in our end of town is going to be addressing the abatement board, because obviously, we're not getting the same bang for our buck that the other taxpayers are getting, and everybody knows that. And we're not going to be brutal about it, but fair is still fair. And while we're on the subject of a different, you know, we're talking about all this money that's flowing in and all these great projects. I'm just curious if there's a way that the board can find some money to supplement maybe some of the agricultural programs at the school in support of the abbey group, like the kids growing food, or better facilities for the rec department. I mean, the kids have got some pretty good stuff, but it just seems like with a small town as various Pittsburgh, that with all this, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars coming in, some of it should go to the children. So, I'm just curious if that, if there's any kind of stuff that you guys can make into.
Decide that would be totally up to the board and as far as.
I'm addressing the entire board.
Yeah.
I mean, I just think that, I just think that there are people here who really do have an interest in the children, and I've seen some of these people come up with some damn creative ways to fund some projects for kids. So, now that there's all this excess, alleged excess cash out there, maybe all this cool crew of people can figure out a way to cycle in some of it and do some projects for the kids, instead of making them collect cans and bottles beside the road to go on a military. Just a thought.
Yeah, no, thank you. Appreciate that. The rec is on our top of our list, though, for money.
Well, there's other, and I'm seeing some other stuff, like in the school systems around, where they're doing these, like, integrated programs with the kids growing food in the schools. And actually doing that and having a connection to the land and to their own diets, which is partly because it seems like a lot of the kids today are really grossly obese and out of shape.
Yeah.
And if I thought I could get away with it, I would love to see Pittsburgh get away from having the school buses, make the kids walk back toward the school, like we did when we were little. We had to walk 20 miles through the snow.
Yep, yep.
To free the snow, I know.
Both ways.
Both ways.
Both ways.
Yes, major.
So, that was, that was all, and I'm getting paperwork from you before I go.
Yeah, I have it.
And that was all we wanted, I wanted to say today. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Any other public comment before we move on? All right, so we'll, um, I see Isaac Wagner is on, on the Zoom. Hi, Isaac. How's it going?
You guys reading?
Yep.
Oh, good.
So, we'll start with the CDBG grant for the village farm, since some, some people are here in person, and then we have Isaac here via Zoom. So, I guess there was some concerns about, um, I guess we were under the impression that we were signing off on this grant as a means of just saying that we, we support the project, but then, I guess, now finding out that there's possibly a lot more involved that we were unaware of. So, I was just hoping you could explain to me kind of how, how this grant works and what exactly the town's role is.
Yeah. Yeah, I can do that. And I have some notes here, and so just stop me as I, as I go through, just, you know, wave your hand and say something if you have a specific question. Uh, but give me a few minutes, and I'll just give you the overview of community development block grants. Um, they originate at the Department of HUD in Washington. Obviously, they're distributed to all 50 states. Um, and they're distributed primarily in two ways. If you're a big town, big city, um, you get just a big chunk of money, and you have programs and staff, and you do what you want with it, for the reason. If you're a smaller town like Pittsburgh and actually a vast majority of Vermont, um, the money goes from HUD to the state, and the state redistributes it to the town, which is what's happening in this case. Um, so with every CDBG grant, whether it's a half a million dollar grant or a $10,000 grant, it's pretty much the same process, and that's where we are here. So, there's five steps, and I'll just go through them real quick. There are five phases, I should say. There's the application phase, and in that application phase, the municipality, um, you know, has to participate by doing a public hearing. You've done that. You've actually done that three separate times, I think. Um, that's not always the case, but usually you just do it once. And you have a select board resolution, which you did several times, to apply for the grant. So, we passed that phase already. The next phase is the grant agreement phase. So, you are, you are awarded, you're given an award letter to the town. The town was provided an award letter. Um, and there is a bunch of stuff you have to do to achieve a grant agreement. And, um, and, and Brenda and I have done almost all of this. I would say we're 90% finished with the grant agreement phase. We still have a few things we need to provide to them, um, which, which are things that need to come from the town. And, um, and then we will be into the next phase. So, so what will happen is, is you guys will get a grant agreement. The town of Pittsburgh will enter into a grant agreement with the state of Vermont, the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, for $60,000. And the intent of it, it will be stated, but, but that's it. So, then, so then you execute that grant agreement, you're getting $60,000. The next phase is, uh, is, is to get us to the point where the Pittsburgh Village Farm can draw on that money. Um, and in that phase, you guys are going to sign another agreement, what we call a sub-grant agreement, which actually I already drafted for you, so. I'm just waiting for the moment, but we're not quite, I can't bring that up until we have a grant agreement, but I preemptively drafted it for you.
Okay.
What the sub-grant agreement does is it passes through the money. So, the money comes into the town, and the town, by, by agreement, passes through the Pittsburgh Village Farm. It also passes responsibility from the town to the Pittsburgh Village Farm. So, grant requirements, you will require Pittsburgh Village Farm to satisfy many of the grant. And an example of that might be procurement. You know, the feds want you to competitively procure tasks and contracts, and you're basically saying, the town's not doing this, Pittsburgh Village Farm is doing it. So, the grant agreements tie in with each other, and it's a, it's a chain. And so, your, your responsibilities, most of which are handed off to Pittsburgh Village Farm in that grant agreement. That third, we're in this third phase, which I call the draw condition phase. Um, you, we will need to have the town's attorney engaged. Um, so this isn't really work for the select board or the staff, but the town attorney has to review the grants, the sub-grant agreement. And I think most likely, the state is going to require that Pittsburgh Village Farm provides a mortgage to the town. So, in other words, if Pittsburgh Village Farm was to default on this grant in some way, um, you could make yourselves whole by foreclosing effectively on the property, and, and then you attorney could make the state whole. So, this is a real technical matter, but it's something that we'll probably have to do in the next phase. Uh, but like I said, it shouldn't cause you too much work. It would be your attorney that does it, and in the grant, we have money set aside to pay for your attorney to do that. So, it should be a cause to the town to do that.
Okay.
All right, so, I'm moving pretty fast.
No, this is good. Keep going. That's good.
I got it.
Okay. Um, so that, once we get to the grant agreement, we get the sub-grant agreement, we get the mortgage, we get all that in place. By then, I would expect Pittsburgh Village Farm, they are already spending money on this project. They are going to want to draw down some of their money to replenish their, their reserves, because they're spending out of pocket at the moment. Draws are fairly simple. I would prepare them for you. Um, it's, it's, there's a system, there's an electronic system that Brenda is enrolled in. It's called GIRS. It's an acronym for something, Grant Administration something. Um, and in that system, we upload invoices and canceled checks that, you know, evidence that Pittsburgh Village Farm has paid for certain services that are eligible, and then we request a drawdown. Uh, the draw, money comes to you guys, it comes to the town, and then the town cuts a check back out to Pittsburgh Village Farm. It sounds cumbersome, but it goes pretty smooth after the first one, once we figure out the first one. We're going to try to minimize those, by the way. I think I would like to see two or three of those top, so we're not doing a draw for every single invoice. We're just going to amalgamate, you know, or collect a bunch of invoices before we go through the hassle of doing a, um, a draw. So, hopefully, two or three draws for the whole project. Now, the one, this is a, this is another check and balance here. The draws that we do are going to have to be reflected on your expense warrant. Uh, so in other words, if Pittsburgh Village Farm says, we want to draw down $15,000 to reverse our expenses, you're going to have to show $15,000. And again, I will prompt your treasurer, Brenda, I'm not sure who, to do this. It just needs to show on your, and be approved on your expense warrant, because technically, it's an expense, but you're going to actually get income coming in for that. You're going to get that amount coming in in income. So, um, so any questions there?
That's where the second bank account comes in.
Right.
Yeah, that's where the second, now, there was a little, Brenda and I had a little discussion about this the other day. Uh, the second bank account is cleaner, and if you are accessing other federal or state, uh, uh, rescue money, I guess, I guess we could call it ARPA money or other types of, uh, federal money that's coming through, that might be something handy for you to have anyway. Um, but, um, there is a way, you, you can, you know, I have worked with communities who have steadfastly told VCDP, you know, we're, we use an NREC accounting system, for instance, and we have one account for everything, and we really don't want to. So, if you really steadfastly don't want to set up a separate bank account, um, we could, I could advocate for you to avoid that if you want to. Otherwise, it's, you know, it's, it's fairly inexcusable. Otherwise, it's, you know, it's fairly inexpensive and fairly easy to do with your banking institution. So it's up to you.
Yeah, well, after, you know, I spoke with the state rep on that and he strongly advised that we have a separate account because it is going to be a pass-through account and makes it clean.
Yes, I agree with that. And I think it does make it much cleaner for you. But I'm just, what I'm trying to say is, they will work with you if you steadfastly feel like you don't want to do that. But I would recommend you do, because it definitely makes it cleaner. So that's the fourth phase. The fifth phase is basically a closeout. And the thing that the town needs to do is, or you know, a ton of other things that Pittsburgh Village Farm and myself need to do, but the piece that the town needs to do is hold a final public hearing, much like the first public hearing. We just need to notice it. We'll do the work of noticing it. We'll do the work of getting it in paper. But you'll need to attach it to a select board meeting and do a final public hearing where the Pittsburgh folks will just, basically, hold a hearing, take any questions and report on how the whole thing went. I would expect that to happen sometime next year. And then, yeah, then we're closed out. So that's the nutshell overview. But what I tried to highlight is the things that we need from the town. There's a ton of things that I have to be doing in the background here. But those are the big pieces from the town.
All right, great. Because there was, last meeting, there was two specific things that caused concern, right? Like I think the policy? Like needing our financial policies or whatever. And there was a second thing. What was the second thing?
This document.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there are three things I need right now. Municipal codes and policies, which I suspect is the thing you're looking at there.
Right.
Some say, well, we can talk about the financial policies in a second. And then we need your certificate of insurance from the town, which is just, I think, an easy thing from Vermont League of Cities and Towns. So I need to upload that. Financial policies is somewhat of a new widget.
Can I just stop you for one second? On the insurance policy for the town, so is that because they're a secondary form of liability if there's, something should occur on the farm?
I'm going to look here quickly. Hold on, be patient with me. Not exactly sure.
Yeah, I'll have a look.
I'm not exactly sure, actually. I can ask that question. Oh, and it just simply says, "A copy of the certificate of liability insurance for the town of Pittsburgh shall be filed with the agency." That's, that's all it says. Certainly, I, we could ask Patrick, but you know, the fact that you have money passing through, coming from the state to you and you turning it around the other way, I think, requires that. The sub-grantee, Pittsburgh Village Farm is going to have to upload their insurance as well in the next phase.
I'm just wondering, as far as from a liability perspective, though, are they, are they putting the town on the hook with the farm if something should happen with a vendor or if there's any sort of issue?
No, I, I think that's going to go both ways. You're going to get a certificate of insurance, letting you know that the town has insurance, but we're also going to want one from Pittsburgh Village Farm.
That they have insurance.
That they have insurance. That's the way insurance companies work, just so they know whoever they're dealing with is covered. So I think that's all this is. Because we'll obviously want one from you, showing that you have insurance if we're going to go into this with you. And the farm wants to know that we have insurance. That way, if something happens in town and the town gets sued and it's more than we have, that they don't come after you, vice versa. That, I believe, is what that's about.
I think, I would just modify that a little bit. This is specifically the state asking. The state has a series of, Brenda, in GEAR, the state has a page specifically for the town of Pittsburgh. Now, you're a relatively new grantee. So here's the other piece of this. If you had been a grantee already, if you'd used these funds before, like for instance, I'm working with Middlebury right now, and Middlebury has used a lot of CDBG grants over the years. So I don't have to do any of this stuff with Middlebury because all these documents are already filed. So you know, you get a new grant, I don't have to get a new insurance policy necessary. I don't have to do these things. So it's a little bit more reverberant for you guys right at this moment because you haven't had one of these before. So this insurance certificate will land in your documents. In your file, in the town of Pittsburgh file, maybe your system is your bank account number, for instance, your insurance policy is evidence of, you know, who you're a municipal authorized official, as is Brenda at this point. This municipal codes document, municipal policies and codes document that you have in front of you, that will land in this file. So it's kind of a separate thing than the grant we're talking about. They just want to see that you have all these things there.
Right.
They do that for every, every grantee, so.
Thank you.
So again, and just in terms of security, liability, again, they most likely require that Pittsburgh Village Farm provides you with a mortgage on the property to protect the town from any default. So we'll learn more about that in the next phase here.
So Isaac, you're-
That's my spiel. Any questions?
No, thank you. But so you're, is your title, like, are you like the grant, like administrator, right? Is that?
Yes. So what I do, I'm a development consultant, a general development consultant, and I help towns and nonprofits build things and navigate building it with public money and some private money as well. So Pittsburgh Village Farm project is very typical, the type of project I do. Within that sort of broad mantle of development consultant, there's a bunch of little things that I, a little bunch of sub-things that I do, but I'm part of the work stuff, new construction management, new grant writing. But one of the things I do is grant administration. So what I try to do, my goal is to sort of grease the wheels, if you will, and be the person that takes the brunt of the workload in terms of the due diligence requirements for these grants. In particular, community development block grants, because they go through a town and, you know, there's a lot of paperwork with that.
So are you being paid by the village farm for this? Or are you being paid by the state?
Well, I'm getting paid by a couple sources. Yes, answers yes to that. They have hired me as their development consultant. For this particular, like, for this meeting and other grant administration, like for instance, when I was on a Zoom call with Brenda a couple weeks ago, those will actually be billed to this particular grant. This grant will pay me for that, for that work. There's a grant administration line item up there.
On behalf of the farm board, I'm Terry White. I'm on the Pittsburgh Village Farm board and just want to say that we have engaged Isaac. He's getting paid initially through some of his grants, but he's going to continue to get paid through us directly. But he are consultants for a number of things, but one key is to help administer these grants and from our perspective, to do everything he possibly can to make it as easy for you to do your under administration of the town. We're hugely appreciative too for this $60,000 that's going through you. It's a real important first piece of an exciting project.
And as you can see, from Donna Wilson, and I'm a volunteer at the farm, as you can see, this pot of money that came in was $2.2 million from federal and state tax dollars. And out of one, two, three, four, five, six, you know, they chose us to tour the $60,000. I mean, we worked hard writing the grant and getting this. But, you know, it's an honor to actually have this grant. And from what Isaac was saying, it sounds like in Vermont, we're so small with these block grants, that they do pass it through the towns, maybe in other states.
Yeah, that's a HUD statute. It has to go, it has to go through a town, a county, or a tribal entity. That's the only way you can get it to nonprofits, so.
So, you know, I'd hate to give up that pot of money. And I guess from listening to tonight's meeting, it sounds like this would be helpful too, having this account. For the ARPA funding that's out there, it just kind of opens the door, possibly.
Yeah.
So, and what you were saying also, before Tintin County gets it, I noticed, like I said, it's 2.2 million, but a million of it's going to South Burlington.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. That's rising.
Yeah. Does anyone else have any questions for Isaac?
Yeah, the fiscal agreement we're supposed to sign. He was going to go over that.
Yeah, so, okay, so yeah, so that's a little bit of a new widget the last few years, particularly with new grantees, which you guys are. They just want to make sure that you have a financial policy in place. They haven't, at least, I haven't experienced that they have picked apart your financial policy so that much. They just want to know that you have one. So, you know, I can give you a couple of examples. I was working in one town down this way who didn't have one, and they took it really seriously and it kind of took forever to have one in place. And then I've worked with another town that, by my estimation, had a really inferior one. I sent it up and they were like, fine, you know, as long as you have. So Brenda and I had a little bit of this discussion, like, should we upload what you have now or is that something that we need to work on?
They don't have one.
They don't have one. Uh huh. Okay. So we need one, but I, I mean, it can't be that hard.
No, I mean, it's not hard.
To create, because it is relatively, and it basically, you know, it covers things like, you know, the person who is opening the mail is not also writing the checks. That sort of stuff is what the policy is covering. Separation of duties. I'm sorry, that's the right word. That's the thing they want to see covered. Now, I might be able to get them to kick that off to the next phase. I might be able to get them to make that a condition before you can draw money, that the town has that in place that would allow us to get a grant agreement now. But I can work with Brenda and, you know, see what we can get in place. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
I have a couple of thoughts about this. We have a small family business here in town and we have supported and donated and support this whole effort, Village Farm. That's not, that's my personal willingness is to support it. But sitting here representing the taxpayers of this town, I have a little bit of bad flavor in my mouth to think that the taxpayers of Pittsburgh are going to be involved in this kind of an enterprise, which has people working for it, provides, it provides a good thing. But is that the role that I should support, representing all the taxpayers of this town? What I donate, what I do with my own personal things, that's my business. But I have a little bit of trouble thinking that I'm advocating that all the taxpayers of this town who I sit here, try to represent, are drawn into this because of my decision. I don't, I can't speak for anybody else on the board, maybe everybody's, if I'm wrong, I'll accept it. But this is kind of a private enterprise, just like my little business is with my family. And is it appropriate for me, as representing all the taxpayers in this town, to be pledging their support and their contribution if it comes to it? It just bothers me. I don't know if anybody else has that feeling or not.
The taxpayers aren't going to be paying for it. But the tax, so all this money is through this grant. The taxpayers aren't paying for any of this.
But the town is being involved in it. And is that where the town should be? If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, maybe.
Well, I mean, yeah, and it's, we're helping, you know, a nonprofit in town and I feel like, and it's not just for this. If we start this and get this set up, we can be doing things, because we've talked about doing a revolving loan fund to try to attract and help either existing businesses and new businesses. So I, in my mind, that's all the same thing to me.
This particular grant source, the Agency of Commerce and Community Development lends and grants to businesses as well. So theoretically, you could have a business. There's strings attached with their business lending. It's usually attached to employment. So in other words, they say, you know, we can lend you at a really low interest rate, but you need to hire so many low-income people in, you know.
In your business.
So that's an example. There's a lot of different programs that they offer. But I think Alicia's correct, the goal here is to not to use property tax dollars. So, you know, we're trying to bypass doing that. Yeah, are we using some staff resources? Yeah, well, I can't, can't lie about that. That much is true. We definitely will be reimbursing the town for some of their expenses.
Wait a second. You said you're reimbursing the town for some of those expenses?
Yes, for your legal expenses and public notice costs, we'll reimburse the town for that.
But not the work that's done within the town office?
Well, I mean, that's correct. Some, let me see how I can put this succinctly. I've had a couple of town office people say they want to do grant administration, the grant administration piece. And if they are the grant administrator, they can get reimbursed. It's cumbersome and awkward and almost without fail, I found town administrators and town managers eventually said, you know what?
It's not worth it.
I don't want to do this. Because it's a pain. It's not worth, it's not worth the reimbursement. That's been the general feeling I've gotten.
I don't think that's what I was asking, is for the time people put in handling the paperwork for this, is on the tax, is on the taxpayer's dollar to do that.
That's, that's true.
That's my point. Just trying to feel if we're getting anything. We're not, so.
Like I said, we're going to try to keep that, we're doing our best, we do our best to keep that to a minimum.
Yeah, I heard you say you bulk them up and try to keep it, you know, a minimum on draws.
Can I just, can you add a couple points? It surprised me that you're questioning now whether to support this grant, because I thought that decision was clearly made through public hearings to support it already.
Well, but-
And the other point I'm just quickly want to make is that it's understand too, this is not a for-profit, this is a nonprofit and its primary development goals are for the community, the community center and a 26-person early childhood care center. So I think it's a lot different than putting in some administrative time to support a private business enterprise.
Joe, you did mention the word private. So we are, you know, we're not, and you have been so generous with the farm. But it's not private, it's public because it's a nonprofit?
So I think where the, where the rub with this is, and I, I don't have a problem with this, yes, Brenda's put some time in, as long as our major expenses are covered, I don't have an issue with it. When this was brought to us, we were assured that we would have to have nothing to do with it. All we were going to do was be a pass-through. That, I think that is where the rub is coming here. Now we're finding out, well, no, you got a little bit more you've got to do. Now, I'm not saying you knew that at the time. I'm going to assume that you did not know that when you came to us. But I think that's-
It was on GEAR's program. It was in a GEAR's program that John signed off on. There was a whole list.
That may be, but when we asked you, I remember specifically asking whoever was here, it could have been, I don't remember who it was, if the town was going to have any responsibilities in this, and we were assured there would be nothing. And now we're finding out, and I'm not saying it's too much, though I'm against it. I'm just saying it's not, this isn't quite what we were told that it was. Okay? That's all I'm saying. Now we're finding out we've got extra stuff that we've got to do, that we were told you were going to hold the money and then, you know, it's going to go through. And maybe I'm just assuming that was a lot simpler process than it obviously is. But-
This is our first run too.
No, I understand that. But the reason you're getting some of these questions is because of that. That's all I wanted to point out.
Well, this is all due to me. And I'm saying, thank the Lord, we got a guy that says he can do it in his sleep. He's a consultant now, because otherwise I'd probably be saying, bag all the red tape myself.
Yeah, I mean, I should, I should just say, I see this a lot with these, with these guys. Not only these, but, you know, there's other sources, USDA and other sources. I see this a lot. It's kind of a personal goal of mine, not just of this project, but of other projects to, to keep, I think the flavor of this came up earlier in the discussion today, to keep money moving. in the discussion today, to keep money moving to rural communities. Because the urban communities will snatch this stuff up. The urban communities that had a lot of capacity, you know, in their town office, and they have whole economic development departments and housing departments, they snatch this stuff up, and it's an overarching goal of mine is to get this to rural communities. So I do whatever I can to make it easier. I wasn't involved with this project last year or the year before. I kinda wish I was, because I could've told, I could've given this spiel earlier on, uh, and, because it's, it's effectively the same burden of paperwork, if it's a half a million-dollar grant or a $60,000 grant. It's basically the same burden, so it, it's a pretty formulaic process, pretty consistent. But, but yeah, I have, uh, I can totally understand how you feel a little sideswiped by this, actually, so.
All right, well, that clears up a lot.
Yeah.
Is everybody good?
I think we just need to review this fiscal.
So, yeah, that's all.
That's not the fiscal paperwork there, that's something else, so.
We need to.
We have to go through that.
We need a financial.
Yeah, we have to go through that, if we go.
You don't have one?
Huh?
You don't have a financial?
Well, we need to have one.
I know, if we go see the paperwork signing, we're gonna go over that before we sign it.
Which probably isn't a bad idea.
No. We should have one.
The question I have is with Isaac, is there a, a template of a standard town financial policy?
Yeah, I have, I have, I have one.
I've asked that question.
Sullivan Powers must have one too.
But I think, I think VCLF, for instance, is obligated to say no to that. Uh, you know, it's almost like, "No, there isn't, wink, wink." Uh, but everybody kinda knows there is. So I could probably drum up a few from another town and send it to Brenda for review, but I think Brenda's background is that she's much better prepared to generate something like that than me. So, Brenda, I could send you a couple of examples, but you will probably have a better sense of it.
I, yeah, I have some.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, though.
That's all we need from Brenda, then.
So that's, all right, so that's our only, so that's our next step, then? Let's get, okay, financial policy?
And look at the paperwork we're signing for, yeah.
Exactly.
We need to review that before anything, yeah. And that, that we need.
Yeah, I'm gonna forward, I'll forward the, um, it's a PDF of this to everybody.
Is that yours?
Yeah, this is the first, this is the agreement that they need from us, yeah. All right, yeah.
It doesn't include the fiscal, though.
No, 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 that's, that's something, um, that's like, uh, the policy, like the town policy. You have that, but you just don't have a finance policy, so.
Yep.
It just needs a little.
Tweaking.
Tweaking.
Okay. All right. All right, good on this topic for now?
I guess.
Yep, so you'll have something for us to look at by the next meeting, probably, Brenda?
I'm hoping to, yes.
All right, yeah, that'll be great. Let's keep it moving, moving along.
So how's the timeline looking for you, Isaac?
Um, I could, give me a little, like, what in particular?
Is he under any gun here?
Yeah, I mean, they, they're gonna do what they can do. I, I will see if we can get to a grant agreement without the fiscal policy, but I have a feeling, I know what the answer to that's gonna be, but I'll ask the question. And, uh, so, uh, you know, we'll get there.
Okay.
We'll get there.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yeah.
Who, who, and I won't call them, I'll, I'll wait for Brenda's prompt on that, but who is the town's attorney, just for my curiosity?
Oh, Gary Kupfer.
Oh, I'm sorry, what was that last name?
Uh, K-U-P-F-E-R-E-R.
Okay.
All right, I spelled that right, didn't I?
I don't think so. It's F-E-U. Is it right?
Yeah.
Is it right?
Yep. I had to write it out to make sure, yeah, that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much, thank you for your patience.
No, thanks so much for being here and explaining all that to us. That was very helpful.
You have the help.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, have a good night.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All right, good, thank you both.
Absolutely. Have a good one. Okay.
No, are we?
Um, well, I started right in the middle, so we can pick up wherever. Um, well, Stephen, I'm here, I'm assuming you're here because of the mosquito district voting members, or lack thereof.
I'm Doug Perkins, who is the chair of the, of the honorary coordinator.
Doug Perkins, I'm the chair of the Board of Trustees for the mosquito control district. With me tonight, Steve Belcher, who you all know, of course, and Brenda Box Howard, who are two of your representatives for the board. I sent you a letter, first of August, saying it's been six months since we've seen your other representative.
Yep.
And I would really appreciate if you could do something about that.
Mm-huh.
Uh, either have him attend meetings or appoint somebody else. The reason I'm concerned about it is, uh, I feel that all 15 people who are on the board should be coming to the board meetings and discussing the issues, particularly as those issues involve quite a bit of your money that we're spending. Um, and the last couple of meetings, we've just barely had a forum.
Okay.
Which means that one person from a town is representing that town before the board, and we're getting into that part of the year, but we're talking budget and how much we're gonna be assessing you for next year.
Okay.
I think you probably wanna have full representation at those meetings for those discussions. I'm here to plead that case and ask that you please, uh, try to find a third person. The alternate representatives are full participants in the board meetings. The only difference between them and your two regular representatives is they don't get a vote unless one of your representatives is not there.
Okay.
Steve is almost always here, 'cause he's our secretary. But, um, and we do appreciate, by the way, having Brenda as your other representative because of the tie right back to the select board.
Mm-huh.
Um, and so that we are in touch with what your feelings are about what the mosquito district is or is not doing for us.
Yep.
The other reason I'm here is just to say, as always, if you have any feedback for me about how things are going this summer, I'm here to take it.
Okay.
It's been excellent.
It's been frequent this summer.
It's been very good.
Freak, I feel like, once a week, I feel like the trucks are going by.
Generally, with some disruption due to weather, like, I don't think they're spraying tonight.
Right.
Coming up. They've been trying to do a cycle, so they start with, in the south, at Proctor on Mondays, they do Pittsburgh on Tuesdays. Um, that ties in with some garbage collection issues, believe it or not.
Wow.
Um, and then they work north and finish with the Lesser and Salisbury on Fridays. Um, and that seemed to work out well. We've certainly had plenty of mosquitoes in the traps to justify the amount of activity.
I've had no mosquitoes in my house.
Me neither, but I'm in the village.
As dry as it's been, you wouldn't think. Well, with that, it's, it's funny, because it's dry, and therefore we aren't finding the larva to be able to treat it with Larvicide. We're having to spray the adults.
The adults.
So where are the adults coming from?
Right, I get it.
Little buggers?
Well, they're coming from tires and, uh, there's also, there's still plenty of wetlands around, uh, where they can breed, so.
Yep.
And in vernal pools and things like that. So we're seeing plenty of adults. Uh, we're having limited success finding larva to Larvicide.
I think Will Mathis reported that, at this point, a lot of the mosquitoes are actually putting their larva in the mud.
In the mud.
Which is damp, but which, unlike water, can't be treated with Larvicide.
Oh, right.
So they, they've found a protective layer there that.
Smarter than, they're smarter than we are.
Little buggers?
Uh, it's been, we've been busy this summer. Um, I was telling Steve, um, we're, the bookkeeper called us the other day and said we had a negative balance on our checkbook.
Uh-oh.
We opened the mail and found two checks. I think one of them was from you folks in fact. She said, "Okay, we're good for another one."
They're cash those.
We can go again. But they've been busy, uh, we only have three employees right now that are spraying. That means that with 17 routes to spray in a week.
Yeah, that's a lot.
They're working a lot of double shifts, so they start spraying about 8:00 at night, and they don't get finished until 2:00 in the morning.
Mm.
And they all have day jobs.
Oh, boy.
So they've been humping.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we got a good crew.
Yeah.
Sure.
Um, I'm just curious, I, I'm a resident in Pittsburgh, and, and I've been here for 20 years, and noticed that last year was the first year that we ever had mosquito spraying on our street, which was, and we're on a private street, so we don't usually get a lot of town services.
Yeah.
Um, but I was curious why they're spraying, why you spray at night? Uh, we were noticing at our house, for example.
Good question.
There was, there was a time, you know, it was like 10, 11 o'clock at night.
Or 2:00 in the morning, something like that.
Yeah.
The reason is because there are beneficial insects that are active during the day, bees and butterflies. And we don't want to be killed.
Sure, of course.
So they go into hybrid, they go into their hives, or they take shelter at night, at dusk. So we start at dusk and spray into the evening.
Which is also when the mosquitoes.
Yeah, they're really.
Absolutely. And, and I can vouch for the fact that there's tons of mosquitoes down where we are, near Gore Bridge Road.
Oh, okay.
Um.
Probably somebody requested them to come in on your road, too, 'cause that's what triggers it, for them to go in on a private road.
It's bad enough that where we live, we've had our own, we, you know, we give our own mosquito control service. We've been doing that for 15 years, because otherwise we can't be outside.
Right.
Our routes are published on our website. If you go to ocwicd.com, that website, um, and look under Roots on the tab, it'll show you exactly what roots, what's covered in each town for the normal spray routes. And that's affected, as you just said, if we get special requests, somebody saying, "Hey, bad out here, can you come hit us?" Um, then we do that as part of our normal spraying.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Any other questions?
Yeah, what are the meeting times again? When do you guys meet?
We meet the third Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM. And our meeting this year is being held at the Brandon Senior Citizens Center, because we're a bunch of old white guys, except for Brenda.
And because Richard Russ has the key.
All right, well, I'll put it on Facebook, see if we can get any, garner any other, any attention. Otherwise, um.
Who is our rep?
That's not book club night, is it?
It's Mike Blaisdell.
No, 'cause he would.
Blaisdell.
And he was the media pass chair, um, and once he relinquished the chair, we haven't seen him since.
All right, well, well, yeah, like I said, I'll put it on Facebook, see if we get anybody interested. If not.
He has been seen, but we haven't seen.
Gotcha.
Oh, okay.
I know. I, I mean, I'd be happy to step in as an alternate until we find somebody.
That would be wonderful, particularly with you being chair of the select board.
Yep, okay.
That would be really helpful.
All right.
And it'd be another woman. How about that?
Okay, great.
Okay, so our next meeting is, in fact, tomorrow night.
Oh, boy, that's.
There you go.
Oh, my God, wait, hold on. Do I have something going on tomorrow? Hold on, I regret this already, I'm.
Well, Stephen and Brenda have already said they'll be there tomorrow night.
All right, well, good, because, yeah, I think.
Okay, so just let me know who you appoint.
Yep.
Um, so we can get that straight. And, uh, if it's you, that'd be just wonderful, thank you.
Yep, all righty.
Okay, and thank you very much for your time.
Hey, have a good night. Have a good night.
See you tomorrow.
You bet. You wanna talk about that mowing arm, Chad?
Sure.
Looks pricey. Looks pricey.
Yeah, looks, uh, what's it made out of, gold? I guess one's cheaper than the first one.
No, it is.
See, it's, it's, uh, mounts to the front loader. Like QuickConnect there, it's got its own separate motor it runs on. Obviously, yeah, below $100,000. But the nice thing about it is we're not spending almost $100,000 on a tractor that's gonna sit for 11 months.
Yeah.
You know, if we got a day free where we can go out and mow, we hook it up.
Go do it.
Run out and mow. And then hook it and get the loader back, so. I don't, I mean, out of the options, I just, I like that option better, 'cause I don't wanna spend that much money on a tractor that's.
Sitting there, doing nothing, all the time.
Well, and you, these modern tractors, you don't want sitting.
No.
Yeah, so, I mean, Brandon's had one for quite a few years. I think theirs runs on hydraulics loader, so I mean, it's a little different, where this is, like I said, the loader's just basically carrying it around, so.
Yep, okay.
I think it's actually a little bit better. Um, but yeah, so that's kinda where we're at with that. Um, we're still running the Ford.
I saw it today.
It's been running it.
Yeah, the other day.
I saw it today.
After it got fixed again.
Saw it today.
So, a few, few minor repairs this morning to do, and got it back on the road, so.
Now, how long before this would come in?
I am not sure. I didn't get a timeline on that. Um, yeah, I don't know.
I'll have it for next spring.
More likely you'd be, you're getting it for next year.
Next year, probably.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can run the Ford through this year.
This year.
I mean, yeah, and have that by spring.
So Chad, you said that unit sits in the, in the loader itself, the way it's set up, or hooks onto the front?
Hooks onto the front, like, we'll disconnect the bucket, hook onto the mower.
And it's running by hydraulic, the, or something different?
Yeah, I mean, it's, has a separate motor that runs mower, and then it'll have the controls in the cab.
So it has a separate motor?
Yeah.
All right on it?
Yep.
It's got, it's got a hydraulic motor and pump, that is a self-contained unit. It's self-contained. Yeah.
And that's running off of diesel? It's, so it's a complete different unit, or?
74 horsepower motor on that.
Okay, so there's a 75 horse motor on the unit itself?
Yeah, a big mower.
Now, I thought we talked about contracting to have this mowing done for a short period of time as a trial run. What happened to that idea? Remember?
I remember, yeah, we did.
Well, we talked about renting it, also, but they sold all their rental units.
Yeah.
Oh, they sold their rental units?
They sold the rental, yeah.
So it was a lot.
So we couldn't rent it, but.
We couldn't, remember? I remember that.
I mean, the salesman was hoping to pull off and honor all the rental.
So that's a Cummins engine?
Yep.
That's a Cummins engine on that one?
Sure.
You don't know?
I don't.
It says Cummins on the side, so I'm assuming that's it, yeah.
So the option of hiring somebody to come in.
That went away, yeah.
Faded away.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think just the expense of hiring somebody, you're not gonna get, for what you pay, you're not gonna get nearly enough work done.
That, that may be, but we, we had discussed that at one point.
We did.
Well, and then we discussed sharing it with another town.
That didn't work out.
That didn't work out? Okay, and all this must have happened the month that I was gone.
Yeah, they, they sold the rental tractor, if I remember right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think you were here.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is.
You got enough money in your account, right?
Should, I mean, yeah, because that was due to be replaced anyways, and then obviously, then held off on it.
The Ford was due to be replaced, that was?
It's, yeah.
Yeah, I think he's.
What are we sharing with Wes Rutland?
With Wes Rutland, they hired us to go over, right?
Yeah, is that what, okay, that's where that was, okay.
Real happy with us?
Yeah, we furnished them the operator and the tractor.
That's right.
If they want to hire us with this.
Yeah, hey, we'll do that too.
Well, I kind of like that option.
Yeah.
Might not be a bad idea.
I know, having to start making some money.
Make some money on it, yeah, hey, yeah. So what do we need, a motion? That's what you're looking for?
On the order, I guess.
This is a motion to order what? This unit, or?
The one he's talking about, which is, what's the total price on that one?
I don't know, you said a hundred thousand, am I looking at the wrong things here?
Yeah, we got the wrong tires, too. We got tractors.
Yeah, you got.
Yeah, I said.
I know, it says estimate for arm, but it's.
Yeah, I'd make a motion, we spend a hundred and two thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents for this mowing arm. I guess that'll cover it, right?
Yeah, that's pretty specific. That was pretty specific.
So, you want to see it?
I'll amend that to a hundred and five, Chad.
I'll second if we want any more discussion.
I want to have more discussion.
He recommended one oh five.
One oh five? Okay, I'll amend my motion to spend a hundred and five thousand to cover the. At least we can discuss it now.
Yeah, that's evidently this unit here.
So this is going to be mounted on to?
The bucket loader.
The bucket loader?
Yes, our loader, yeah.
That's, that's the part I was.
That's, yeah, on the bucket loader.
So we're going to put it right on our loader?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Park it. Okay, so does this have depth? I'm seeing tier four.
I don't know if it does or not. I didn't look, actually, I gave it to you guys, so. I don't, I mean, if it does, we have to tank.
That drain it out.
We have it for the trucks anyways.
You're right, and drain it out, and, yeah, because that's the big issue, that stuff goes bad, and then nothing works. Which one, the nineteen, twenty-four, or twenty-five, the one you're looking at?
It says under.
All reach? Yeah.
Um, I think it's, I think that price was for the nineteen, I'm a hundred percent sure.
Is there anybody got?
Like the twenty-five, but I don't know if we want to.
That's a little expensive.
Well, it'd be nice to clear the roads back that much, but you're going to have to cut some big trees in order to be able to do that.
Yeah, and now it'll be right away a little bit.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Is there anybody, anybody around the county, or coach boy got one of these that you could look at, or?
Brandon.
Brandon has one.
Similar to this, yeah.
Yeah, I've seen that. It seems to work pretty well.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they're very happy with it.
Well, getting an operator used to it makes, take a little oil.
I would guess, yeah, because it's kind of an odd, it's not behind you, so it's actually probably easier.
It's actually easier.
It seems like the ability part would be good.
I'm just trying to figure out which one it is here, the nineteen, the twenty, or the twenty-four, or twenty-five, I don't know where.
You did some mowing for Wes Rutland, I believe, didn't you?
We did with our.
With those blowers.
Does that work out? Were you happy with that, results of that?
Yeah, yeah, we're happy, we've got, I think, most of the town done.
I can't figure out which one it is.
Seems like something.
You didn't find the size on that.
Could work out beneficial all the way around.
I'm missing it.
Right.
The price was right.
Yeah, and I think we gave them a fair price.
Mary Ann was really happy.
But still.
She appreciated it.
You know, we got something out of it as well, so.
I presume you're getting the right side?
Yeah.
Okay, just because it comes both ways.
Yeah, I saw that, but, yeah.
Okay, well, just, yep.
Yeah, it'll be in traffic enough that way.
Don't need to be on the other. Just get hit from behind, so it's not your fault, not at all. I don't see on there what, it says a model, but it doesn't, I don't know what it pertains to, so.
Alex, I'd be more up to go with the nineteen foot. I believe Ford that we have is seventeen, either seventeen or nineteen.
So that should do it.
It's not any.
No board, no, no law.
I can't find anywhere on there either.
No, there's nothing on there that tells which one it is.
Or higher.
Well, I can get the exact quote on the nineteen, though.
Yeah, make sure, because, yeah.
You don't think that quote doesn't match up with exactly what?
Doesn't say which one it is.
Doesn't give a, I don't remember really go back on there. They did that on the nineteen, that quote?
I think so.
Well, we need to know, though.
We need to know, well, we kind of need to know that.
Yeah, I can, you know, give them a call tomorrow.
Yeah, I think before we do anything, we need to know what it is we're buying.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I don't have a problem with, I mean, if you're getting the twenty-five footer for that price, that's fine, but the nineteen will work, and it's twenty grand less, we need to know.
Let's just get an exact with all the details, with all the quote.
Yeah, yeah. I'll send a call, that was a, a quote we had done for another.
Yeah, it's for Linden. Yeah, I saw that it was for another town.
Yeah, another town.
So they've got to get us an exact, probably, is what you want to do there.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
I will draw my motion, then.
Yeah, we'll hold on.
Accept your motion pending further information from Chad.
Yeah, you could do that, but it wasn't seconded, anyway.
I seconded.
Oh, you did?
I was seconding it.
We're in discussion.
We're in discussion, so I'd say we just table it for now.
Yeah.
Till we get more information.
Get the exact.
Yep.
Yeah, because a week or two is not going to matter, I don't think.
Well, no, this is for next year, so.
Won't be, won't be next spring, probably, anyways.
Okay. Oh, we did already do. All right, so truck purchase. First truck totaled upon, prior to delivery.
Smashed up. Yeah, so I just, I mentioned that, just because, you know, I signed another contract, but it's not for another truck. It's for another truck, but it's for.
The same one.
Different truck.
The same one that we don't.
Impeded because they crashed it and totaled.
The choice is the same.
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
I just, this was just like an FYI.
Okay, all right. So we don't have to sign anything?
Unloading it off the truck, Chad, or what?
I, I know.
They forget to ramp down and.
It was on the highway.
It was on the trans, it was on the highway, yeah.
Jeez.
Driving or? But, yeah, enough going into trees and.
Totally.
And, oh, but, and they looked at it, so.
Yeah?
All the details.
Okay, well, no.
Two days, order us another one.
Okay.
So it'll be a little longer before we get it, so.
Yep, all right.
All right.
Next round.
Yeah, probably.
Talk like that.
All right, and then we had assessors, errors, and omissions requests.
Yeah, that's it, that should be something that you need to see, did you see it?
Yeah.
Because that was included in the packet.
Yes.
Okay.
I did see it. Oh, no, I did. Yes, I did, I lied.
So it's my knowledge, I mean, this is something that you acknowledge from her?
Yeah.
I don't think you signed anything. She just wanted to make sure that you guys would notice about it.
Oh, okay.
So we don't have to vote on approval of them?
I thought we have in the past, yeah, I was going to say.
I thought so.
Yeah.
I'll need the.
Yeah.
Plenipotent of it.
The plenipotent.
Okay.
Motion to approve, as it's come from Lisa.
Okay, I'll second that. Favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then sidewalk updates?
We have, we, so we have. Yeah, I emailed you guys earlier, the quotes.
Okay.
So it's.
It's in your court? Uh, there was a lot of emails, I didn't see it.
Oh, you didn't see them?
If we can just have the numbers, that'd be great.
Yep, sure.
And this is with the curving, just on that, the blasted section?
No. Yes, this is, well, this, no, this is with, this is, because initially, you had wanted, with, like, doing the whole section from the church down there at the end of the village, all the way up through, and then if we just do pieces, what will it be? So what he ended up doing is, we went out there and we were looking around, and he said at the end of the day, it would be, okay, that's the sidewalk price, that's the curving one. The curving is going to be ninety dollars a linear foot, and you need approximately twelve hundred linear feet, and you, that brings you up to, you know, almost a hundred thousand dollars.
That's just curb.
That's just curb.
Then the paving after.
Paving is another.
No.
We just want paving, I think.
I, this, I wanted to stick a fork in my eye when I read that, and I realize, Brenda, you're not, haven't been part of this. We have had this fight for what? Since I've been on the floor, the stupid sidewalk.
Yeah.
We've got asphalt down there now, okay? It's been there as long as I can remember.
Since I was a kid.
It seems to work fine. I don't understand why he, other than he makes a lot more money putting concrete in, but why he doesn't want to put that asphalt. There's asphalt in Procter along some of their sidewalks. It holds up just fine. I don't understand why we can't put that asphalt, or extruded, whatever they want to call it, curb.
And I thought that's what we asked for.
That's what we asked for.
So why are we getting prices for, quotes for concrete?
No, it's not concrete.
Yes, it is.
It's, it's the stone that you had in front of there. We were looking at what was already there, in front of that white, you know that white church that's right ahead of your street when you come out?
Mm-hmm.
We were looking at what was already there, and that's what was there, was stone, it wasn't a cement.
Either way, though, we just want to do it the cheapest way possible, so we had asked for asphalt curving.
Yeah, he didn't offer that as an option.
Of course he wouldn't. I think all we want to do is lay down.
I mean, you asked him that, we were asked about that, and he just was like, no, I'm not going to do asphalt curving.
No, no, I didn't actually ask that, I just asked for curving.
That's what we wanted to know, what, oh.
Well, no.
I said extruded, I said extruded curving. Those were the words I used.
Okay.
Yes, and he said he would not do that.
Oh, he did, okay.
In the email, I'll take, give me a minute.
Said he doesn't recommend it.
Yeah.
I don't care whether he recommends it or not, I mean, if we have to, just my opinion, if we have to sign off saying, we understand it may not be durable, we don't care.
No, I know.
We need something there to keep people from driving down the sidewalk and running over people, and if snowplow takes a little piece out, we patch it, so be it. I don't understand why this has to be so complicated, and I apologize, my hip's killing me, and I literally, when I read what he wrote, I wanted to stick a fork in my eye, because it's like, we've been over this a thousand times.
This is what he wrote, if you want me to read it?
Yeah, I have not find it.
She said, I would not recommend or install asphalt curving in the situation along US-7. Precast concrete was an option discussed a few years back.
They'll rip it up in eight, ten years, anyways.
So that, that was.
That's the whole point.
Yes.
Asphalt being good.
So he's not going to do it.
I guess, which is really frustrating, because I thought we had gotten to this place where we're going to actually get this done this summer. The work is already being done, in the section of seven.
The actual sidewalk, without the curving.
Yeah, that's what we want done, the sidewalk, I guess, no curbing.
That's ninety, that came out, he revised his quote.
Yeah.
Which was six thousand, one hundred and fourteen feet, which equaled out three hundred and eighty tons, and it's two fifty a ton. So it came, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was like ninety.
Eighty, ninety thousand, somewhere in there. It was under a hundred grand.
Started at eighty-one.
Started at eighty-one.
And that was an estimate.
Yeah.
Over the, like, over the phone.
And now he's at ninety?
He's at, yeah, ninety, well, ninety, a little more than ninety, because he ups the feet.
The state just paved that road down through there. Why, Norwalk, aren't they responsible for?
Because we're responsible for the upkeep of sidewalk, that's why. We already looked into that.
Well, I agree, Joe.
Well, I agree too, but.
We've gone over it a thousand times.
Round and round.
We have, and it's frustrating.
Let's just get it done, let's just get it done.
You're going to get this done, and then somebody throws, well, don't happen.
Can we meet with this guy?
How much?
Ninety-five thousand.
Ninety-five thousand.
Because we knew it was going to be.
That's just the curbing.
No, 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 that's the sidewalk.
But that's all the sidewalks in town.
That's all in town.
Sidewalks in town, no curbing.
Oh, without the curb.
Right, to make them, at least, where people can walk on them.
Right, jeez. That's frustrating, okay.
Where's that funding going to come out of, if we do that?
Well, ARPA would be the most obvious.
And how much is in our village fund?
I don't know what's in the village, there's probably some in there, probably not a lot.
I don't think there's a lot.
I doubt it.
I don't have an update.
Me, I don't remember a lot, because there was like thirty-five thousand or something.
Yeah, we were going to take twenty-five of it at one time.
I don't think we did.
We didn't, we didn't, so I don't know what's still in there.
So it hasn't been touched at all since then, right?
We didn't touch it.
I don't think it's been touched, so there should be thirty, forty grand.
So it might be twenty-five, yeah, should be at least twenty-five that we're going to take out.
Okay.
And originally, we were going to take twenty-five out of your budget, and twenty-five out of town budget, to make the fifty.
Mm-hmm.
If I remember it, and then.
Tried, tried, you didn't divert it from, but that didn't work.
No, that didn't work.
That didn't work. So I think ARPA money is probably our best shot, and then we can, whatever we need to, but we need to get it done.
So we need to get forty-five thousand out of the ARPA for it, then.
Well, whatever it ends up, maybe more.
Well, we need to find out how much is in the village fund.
Right.
I don't think we want to fully deplete it.
No, no.
Take a.
Chunk of it.
A chunk of that, and then some ARPA funds, those two.
Some highway funds and ARPA funds, and.
Okay, so twenty, yeah.
Twenty-five and the twenty-five out of him, and then there was forty-five left, right?[1422.12] Twenty-five and then twenty-five out of him, and then there was forty-five left, right?
Well, the state agreed, agreed to contribute.
Some at one time.
No, that was all on...
That's gone, no, no state.
That was the grant.
That was the grant.
That was the grant, that was a hundred grand.
Two hundred thousand.
Joe, we're on our own with this.
We're, this is on us.
Two hundred thousand to do that short section.
We've been over this so many times.
I know.
It's frustrating.
So we just need to authorize Brenda to go ahead and get this thing done.
Yeah, but just a quick question.
Yes.
Did that include furnace row too, or is that?
No, I don't believe, no, just Route seven. Furnace is pretty decent, yeah, that's, Route seven's terrific, terribly.
Compared to seven, yes. I do like furnace a lot. I think it's not the best.
But it's...
It isn't the best.
No, but it's...
No, well, and also, it's, I mean, it's set in more, and it's got the greens, what do you call that when you have the strip of grass or whatever, you know? She makes it safer, I mean, even that's just a visual, you know, barrier for people, so it is much safer.
We need to do it.
So, yeah.
Yes, we do.
Stop talking about it and do it.
Yeah.
So we get them paved.
I guess, whatever, if he doesn't wanna make more money by doing asphalt curving, then we're just gonna have the sidewalks.
Well, let's, 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 let's do the side, let's do the sidewalks. Why don't we have Brenda ask him, say, listen, if, if we, we understand that this curb isn't gonna be as durable as you think it should be, if we sign off that...
Sign off on it.
We're, we're, if it gets destroyed, he's not responsible?
Yeah, if you want that, no thing.
Last ditch effort type thing?
Yeah, like, reach out to him, be super nice, 'cause it would be great to have a curb.
I've been nice.
I wasn't implying you weren't.
Super nice, yeah, just not nice, super nice.
Tell him, we gotta get this done this year before he quits paving.
I'll do that. Now, getting back to the funding piece of it, what I'll do is find out all those numbers and then I'll send you all an email. And then you can reach back to me and tell me how you want it.
Yeah, yeah.
Broken out. Okay.
Yeah, 'cause we can always play with money later.
What he's gonna do with curb.
Well, either way, though, I need to, gotta find out funds.
Right, curb.
I'll reach out to him.
But we, we need to get the resurface of the sidewalks, get that moving right now.
Do we have a timeframe with him, or is it gonna come back?
We need to move quick.
Yeah, you can do it now.
Yeah.
So do we want, I mean, do we have to wait another couple weeks to get this?
No, we need to vote on tonight. She needs to...
Sidewalks, we need to get on them now.
Yeah, because see, as soon as...
Once they're done out of here.
Then go there, and then if I can add this on.
Right.
I can lock in those...
Lock in those prices.
Right.
All right, yeah, let's...
So you just, you need a motion to let her do it, I guess.
I'll make the...
Okay, no, go ahead, I'll, go ahead.
I'll make the motion that we go and get started with these sidewalks.
Repavement of all the sidewalks from the church.
All of seven, through the village.
To the village.
All on seven.
For ninety-five thousand.
For ninety-five thousand, for repaving those. I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion?
No.
Oh, my God.
That's the question.
And it isn't discussion on this, but it, in, right now, we just need to mention that we're still looking into the curb part.
Yeah.
But we're, we're gonna get at least...
Let's get that done. Yeah, we need to get that done.
And then you'll try to negotiate something with him on the curb.
Later.
If we can get that this year, if we have to do it next spring, so be it, but figure out something.
But those we need to get done.
All right, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
We're still not sure how we're gonna pay for it, though, are we? We've gotta figure it out.
We'll figure it out. We gotta find out. We're gonna take a chunk of the village plus our...
Jackie figures around to come up with the money, pretty much.
We'll build a school for fifty thousand for in front of their building. That's a good idea. What do you think?
I'm, I'm totally agree. You're on it. You're on it. Given the way they treated us, that's fair.
All right, we're finally onto new business. Uh, park and ride grant program. Was there a need for a park and ride in Pittsburgh?
There really isn't, but I just...
Did you, park and ride?
I don't know. Whatever become of that? Maybe Hank remembers talking about a park and...
They ran out of money, they did.
Never did come up with it possible.
We had, we had a couple. There's a Dollar General there now, on one of them.
Okay, that one's out.
That one's out.
That one's out.
One down by Wade Mitchell.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the Catholic Church.
Catholic Church.
Yeah.
Well, they use that for one now already.
Well, I was gonna say, they're still in play on that. I would think they should be accessible to that.
That's probably why they didn't go ahead with it, 'cause they had one in town already.
Could be. But I think there's money...
Yeah.
Actually, I talked to Butch about that, and he said there is money's gonna be available for that.
Well, that's what, yeah.
Where is the site?
Well, I think they're talking, maybe the Catholic Church? Did they give you any indication on that, Brenda?
No, I, this was something, it was a grant opportunity, I just wanted to know if...
Oh, okay.
If there was interest by the board for me to pursue it or not.
Yeah, I think, 'cause Butch mentioned there is money.
We keep getting a lot of...
Crap, yeah.
Well, phone calls and stuff about not having chargers in town for people that have electric vehicles.
And that would be a good spot, if you think about it, is a Catholic church.
Brian, Brandon, let's see, who needs a charger?
Where they park now. They might get their lot paid to all that.
Yeah, it's worth, it's certainly looking into.
Yeah, let's look.
Well, yeah, 'cause that, and that parking lot, so, yeah, I know a lot of people...
'Cause people use it.
In the morning out to, at the Catholic church, and then, you know, carpool, that, and that parking lot is horrible.
It is.
I wonder if they could get money to have that all repaved.
I'll bet they get, you know what? I'll bet you they get lighting.
Right, no.
And charging stations.
It makes it a hot mess right now.
So let's pursue it.
All right, so, yeah.
At least find out.
You surprised me on that one. No, I know.
I didn't think you were gonna go for that one.
Who's to buy?
I didn't either, until I realized that people do, do...
They do park there, yeah.
Formerly do have one.
If you can get money to get it paved so you can walk through the parking lot, that's even better.
So there's grants out there for chargers too, that...
Yeah, I think, I think our rep would help us on that too, Butch.
We were gonna put one in out here.
We've talked about it.
Have the charging station.
Put one out back.
Well, wherever.
Put one out back.
Wanna make more sense out of put one like near a kamuta, so people could actually, in the library, you know what I mean, so people could actually do something while they're waiting?
Village Farm would be a good spot for it.
Really gonna do up here.
Pay their taxes.
Yeah, yeah, pay their, you know, come in once a week and pay their taxes.
They could weed along the side of the building, that's what they could do.
Well, I mean, presumably, the only people are gonna use it are people who are driving through, people that live here are probably plugging them in at home.
Tied that in with your parking rights.
Your parking, parking ride is the place to do it.
That's the place to do it.
Yeah.
They'd end up with...
The trouble with kamutas in the library is there isn't enough parking there anyway.
No, anyway, it's a beauty.
And you get a charging station, and what's gonna happen is Hooker here is gonna come in and, without his electric car, and that's the only spot open.
And I'm gonna be mad.
And he's gonna park in it, and then I'm gonna come over with my electric car, and I'm gonna have to push his car out.
Just thinking up trouble.
Oh, boy.
They must have room enough for a parking ride.
Where's that?
Where?
Where do you say, Joe?
Village Farm.
Oh.
Village Farm, and they've got space that would be available, that's in the...
They do.
Yeah, I think the Catholic Church is the one that's...
Yeah, it's right on Sutherland.
And the charging stations there would be about...
They perform right on the major...
No, I know.
And that's already where the bus stops.
The bus stops there.
Right, exactly.
The lot does need paving, there's no question about that, and they would end up with the lighting, and they'd end up with charging stations too, and the state would pay for it. So that's a win-win for everybody.
It's a win-win for everybody.
All right, cool.
That'd be a win-win for everybody. I'll bet you Butch will help us on that.
I'm gonna look into the grant.
There you go.
And the, and the charging stations too.
Oh.
And we're gonna put them all in the same spot.
That's why I mentioned it.
Yeah, smell that, yeah, that's...
Yeah.
Let me add that in.
Add that in, yeah.
I don't know, but listen, we propose it to them, exactly.
I think they're in favor.
I don't know if they can get their lot paid.
They'd be in favor of it, I'm sure.
And eventually, they're gonna have people, electric cars, driving to church, so...
Exactly, so you get your car charged while you go to church.
There you go. See, that's what you're gonna do while you're getting your car charged, you're gonna go to church.
There you go, yeah. Well, we got this all covered.
All right, well, finally, so, um, we need to create a cannabis review policy?
Okay, so, yeah, I, I really feel strongly that you should, because it'll help to give that board and your, your board guidance, kinda guide you. And, and at least give some, put some thought into some of the things that can happen as people come up with permits to do this in town. One concern that happened is odor, and if you have that strong odor in the village, I don't know anyone that would wanna go and stand out on their deck and have a cup of coffee in the morning smelling skunk. You know, it could be a big deal, especially, you know, if it's like right, like kamutas area, like in that realm.
Which is where something is proposed to go right now.
Oh, yeah, across the road.
She sent a letter out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing with that too is anything that's tied into your public systems, your water.
Yeah.
And your wastewater.
Wastewater.
Is very critical. So that, that right now is under the realm of the state, so Sean reached out to the state with concerns, because if any of these chemical components...
Get into the system.
Going to the wastewater, it can affect our testing results, and, you know...
Well, not only that, but the amount of phosphorus they're using to grow that.
Right.
That's gonna be a very heavy level in that wastewater.
So I, I just think there should be...
What we need to do down on ours.
Some, some sort of vetting process, you know?
Yeah, all right.
Is there, is there a template? I mean, I've...
Somebody got one?
State has something, right?
The state has something, but I don't think they're really handing out like a recommended...
I don't know, there's kinda...
What about the league?
The leagues have anything?
The League of Cities and Towns.
They have some suggestions.
They do, they have, they have a whole committee that's just been working on cannabis for years, so I'm sure they have something.
Yeah, so it was just, I just wanted to...
Should we start this on our agenda for next time, that we're gonna...
Yeah.
At least make some, a rough outline?
You know what I could do? Do you want me to, like, just grab that information, put it in the packet?
Yep.
And then in advance of the meeting, you could have a chance to see it.
We can discuss it. We'll probably end up with a...
A committee again.
To sit down.
They recommend that, they recommend that you have an actual committee.
I say hash it out.
No pun intended, right? Oh, boy. It's getting late in here. We're on overtime.
I know, well, if we don't have anything, unless anyone has anything left, we don't even have executives, so we can...
No, we can end this.